All right. We will start our meeting with a tax classification hearing for fiscal year FY19. And I believe we have members of the assessors department to lead us in that. Or Board of Assessors, I should say, depending on how you want to classify yourself today.
I guess we're just a board of assessors.
All right. You play that dual role, right? So you could call yourself part of the department.
First off, I'd like to have the copies of the document the Board of Assessors have already written. And I feel that this is mandatory. And I would like to see with that.
Pass it out and do a quick scan. If there's any questions, give each person a chance to scan it. Guess that would copy in your packet.
It's in your packet.
I got one. Apparently. Well, if anybody out there would like one, I guess we get some extras.
Yeah. It pretty much explains why we're here and what we have to do. We have to pretty much take four votes and supply some signatures.
Okay. So it's the first vote, the residential factor.
Should we open the space, please, Joe?
It was close. I felt like I was close there.
You were. The reason that the Board of Assessors would like a vote, a vote of no, an adoption of the open space discount is because it exists in Chapter 61 of the program, all money in the 25-year set reduction, reassessed value, and reduced taxes. It would be of no benefit to the town or the taxpayer.
Gotcha. Does anybody have any questions on that? I make a motion to vote no on adopting the open space discount for the recommendation of the Board of Assessors.
Second.
Any further discussion? Call for vote.
Aye.
Aye. We had just voted no on adopting the open space discount on your tax because the Chapter 61 laws already provide a significant discount for the same. So we're not going to expand upon it in our town. At least, not this year.
Okay, next we have the residence exemption. The reason that these Board of Assessors would like to a no vote for adopting the residential such, the residential exemption is because benefits to these with high number of vacation homes, non-occupied property, lengthy qualification process, possible overlay deficit, and exceed the levy of it.
It's really just not applicable to our community at all, is it?
No, it is true.
I make a motion to vote no on adopting the residential exemption.
Second. Have you heard the discussion?
We can't really yield what you said.
All right.
So I don't know what you're trying to say.
The residential exemption basically takes vacation communities and they lower the taxes than the people who own or occupy their homes and heavily tax the rentals and stuff. Doesn't apply to us, really.
Just so I know what's...
Yeah, that's all that is. We're getting ready to vote. We have a motion, a second to vote on it at this point.
Anybody else have any comments? Call for vote.
Aye.
Aye. Vote no to adopt the residential exemption.
Okay, next the Board of Assessors recommends a no vote for the small commercial exemption. The reason being, owners of the property, not the business owners, receive the benefits. Industrial class, increase the burden, no cost effectiveness to this town at all.
So it's just giving a break to the owner of the property rather than the businesses actually doing the business with the town, which is personally, since we're trying to grow business, I think it's smarter to avoid that as well. So I make a motion to vote no on adopting the small commercial exemption.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Second.
Any further discussion? Sam?
We just can't hear what this gentleman is asking for.
I'll repeat it and also add a little bit more just to clarify. He said that the Board of Assessors recommend not accepting the small commercial exemption for commercial parcels occupied by businesses with an average annual employment of not more than 10 people during the previous calendar year and with assessed values of less than $1 million. There are approximately 75 small commercial businesses within the town of Berry that have been listed by the Department of Workforce Development. The owner of the property, rather than the business occupying the site, receives a tax benefit. So the point made here was the actual business owner, not necessarily the property owner, does not necessarily receive a benefit by accepting this exemption. And by accepting it, it also transfers any of those discounts or exemptions to the rest of the community to make up the difference for the tax of the appropriation. So it's not necessarily an overall beneficial balance of taxes in our town. Am I correct?
That's correct. If the benefit was going to the small businesses, that would be an opportunity for us to give them a tax incentive or a tax break to come do business in town, which would put a small additional burden back on the rest of the town. But it would be an attempt to draw more business. But that's not the case. This would go to the owner of the building, not the business owner. So we're voting to, motion to not accept it. Any further discussion? Call for a vote.
Aye.
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 Okay, and the last vote is to vote to accept the single tax rate. Given the large percentage of our tax base is the residential class, a split rate would burden a smaller percentage of the commercial, industrial, personal properties. As you can see by the chart, residential represents 85.7736% of the town. And commercial, 5.6732%, industrial, 2.234%, and personal property, 6.3192%. That's why we recommend accepting a single tax rate and not having a split rate.
I agree with that as well. I think if we want more taxes from business, we just need more businesses, not a higher rate on the businesses because that's going to, once again, deter the businesses from coming to town. So I'll make a motion. We vote to adopt a minimum residential factor of one for a single tax rate for the fiscal year 2019.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
Just a question on this, and I'm not suggesting... It sounds like there's, the minimum of one just means it's just one-to-one ratio.
Yes.
If you go less than one, it means you're saying...
Eight, seven, five?
The decrease that you give the residents just gets thrown into the commercial-industrial? Or is it commercial-industrial property? It just goes to all the other three balances? Like it, you know what I mean? Evenly shifts by ratio to all the other sectors? Okay. Can you do it the other way?
Make a 1.2?
Where you could increase the residential and reduce the other ones?
Well, if you made a factor of 1.2 instead of 0.8, you'd go...
Well, I didn't know if you could go up. That's why I was asking.
I don't know why you couldn't.
An action would be five.
Thank you.
Yes, you can. I believe that's all of them. You want, you have one for us to sign, a signer page?
Did I call for a vote on that? Did I just have, let's call for a vote?
Oh.
Just to make sure.
Sorry about that.
Aye.
Aye. You did have one question before the vote. I was thinking we already did it. Oh, you got the signer page right here.
This is the fun part.
This is John Henry on the white area in both of those. And you get one copy and we get the other.
Right in here?
Right in the white area, John Henry. Signed and dated.
Andrew had one here for us to go through.
Well, it's a different form.
Do you have two signatures, Andrew?
I just, I do the tax side one. We could do a no one. We're going to have to sign it. Yeah, I just, I brought it back up.
Okay. Yeah, we should have two originals.
Okay. So I'll just start that one. I just, I only have the one original.
I mean, I thought the packet of information and the email that got sent out on the whole factor issue was quite good.
And she was asking me about that, if we liked that.
Yeah, I liked it.
I did. I just hadn't read it all the way through at that point yet.
It's great, Jim. That way we keep everybody on the same page.
It's better to understand, to have a little comprehension of what we're doing. You know, it helps.
And why we're doing it. So you get one copy, Andrew?
Uh...
The original?
Take them both back with you and make sure that you guys get the final copy.
Okay. I'm sure I'll leave it straight in my office.
Yeah. I figure, let her disseminate the originals.
It's only two forms that we need to sign?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Definitely appreciate you taking the time to be here to answer any questions.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me double check. How did this change our tax rate per thousand this year?
Decreased it.
Decreased it? So there you go, everybody. You're asking, we actually succeeded in decreasing our tax rate this year per thousand.
I don't know if that's a secret or not, but is that what...
No, but some people...
Is that ready for announcement yet, or is now...
I think now that we have the classification, I think it's ready.
Still pending approval, I'm sure, by the state and everybody else. But that's how we see it happening as we move forward. Yes, Sam?
How about the assessments?
I'm sure they went up.
So basically, everything's the same, pretty much?
Basically, that's how it works. We have our revenues we need for the year, and those revenues are coming from the same sources of homes. So when the values are up, the rates are down. If the values are down, the rates are up.
The real relationship, I would suggest...
We like low rates and high values.
Is this. If you look at the budget approved at every annual town meeting, and it steadily grows, we usually try to keep ourselves, I think, what? 5% of the tax levy that we don't throw into the budget. Something to work with us if something pops up at special town meeting. But other than that, it grows almost as consistently as the 2% levy grows. That's how we've been going since I've been here. Which means costs rise. Our population hasn't risen to that same level. Our number of parcels don't necessarily rise. So the costs are going up. So if the tax rate is not going up per thousand dollar valuation of your property, if it's not going up, what it means is at least the value of the town is also rising with the cost of the town. But if the tax rate's going up as the costs go up, what it means is the value of the town is not keeping up. So despite it costing more, the value is actually going down. And it means either we're not properly taking care of our infrastructure, we're not taking care of our own properties individually, whether it's commercial, residential, et cetera. All that adds up to the total valuation of the town. So that's how better to understand, did your tax rate increase? That means is your cost of doing business and the value of your properties rising at a similar level? It doesn't have anything to do with are you going to pay more or not? That's that relationship between the valuation, the tax rate. What we've got to do, and what we've been trying to do, is increase our revenues because that's how you actually save your actual tax bill reduction is generally by getting more revenues into the town to reduce the overall balanced budget. Yes, Sam?
I'd like to follow this up with that. This is the same vein. Is that, the basic question is, is what are the selectmen and the town administrator doing for the town to generate additional revenue such as businesses, such as town-owned solar, such as, are you doing anything other than expecting the shoulders of the residents, taxpayers to come up with these revenues? I guess that's a question. What are you folks doing?
Many, many things.
To...
I can speak to at least some of them.
Oh, great.
I know that we've been involved with meeting with many agencies, businesses, and residents of not just Berry, but also all the towns associated with the Quavon Regional School District, trying to develop economic plans that help the region as well as the town. I've personally been reaching out to individual landowners and reaching out to people in business industries to see if I can find a way to connect them and show them why Berry's a place to go. In other words, trying to bring jobs to the town because I think jobs start creating the need for better housing, which creates the need for... But the jobs are what bring the people in, which brings us more economy, which it just adds to a bigger picture that brings revenue. I do know that you've mentioned several times solar. We need to find town-owned property that may work with that.
Town-owned solar. I've mentioned it.
You said town-owned versus PPA, lease, et cetera. You said town-owned.
Yeah, but town-owned solar.
Right. And I've mentioned to you some of the difficulty with town-owned versus potentially someone else brought up leased property where someone else manages it, and you can at least just say, I got a fixed income for so many years, and it's theirs to deal with the regulatory issues going on with the solar industry now. Town-owned is a little different. It's not necessarily bad, but you've got to really, you've got to put some time into it. You've got to have someone representing the town that has the time to put into it and knows it to actually get the right deal. So there's a little involved. I don't think we've completely ignored that. It's just, there's a balance of applicable sites that town owns that don't have other regulations involved, whether it's open space or other things that say we can or can't do something with it. And also working with the position of many of the town members that right now are not necessarily big on solar. So we've got to keep that balance in place. And so it hasn't been easy to try to move forward with something like that, is all I'm saying. It's not impossible, but right now we have several zoning things that would prevent some of our town property from even being viable if we were to follow our own zoning bylaws.
I'm referencing this gentleman who spoke at one of the meetings, who sat back here, saying something about he believes that there's a way to absorb the capping costs for the dump, the oil dump, and to benefit the town with solar. And I don't know if anybody's been researching that. And I bet that...
I just lived it in Worcester.
Just a moment. Is that, I bet his deal that he offered, I don't recall his name.
That's the wrong one.
He's been around. I bet his deal that he offered to be a lot sweeter if someone of authority from you guys and the town administrator contacted him and have meetings and discussion with them because the solar benefits are becoming less and less and less as time progresses. And you know this. And I would hate, I would hate to look at this in 10 years and say, gee, we missed the vote. Because I have a feeling we are missing the vote. And it's costing us, the taxpayers dearly. That's all I can, that's all I can say.
I do understand what you're saying. And I personally feel to some level, we already missed the boat because this region's circuit has already tapped out. And the infrastructure for national grid upgrades in order to tap into the solar is on the customer, not national grid. So the customer has to pay national grid, sometimes anywhere from $1,000 to half a million dollars just to upload, update three miles of line and major transformers and a substation so you can tap into your solar. That cost generally is prohibitive unless you're getting into four, six, eight megawatt size systems, which takes up to, you know, 20 to 25 acres. So there's a lot of situations going on in Berry that makes it hard for us. It doesn't mean it's impossible, nor that we haven't talked about it because they presented options, they've asked, I think even, did you do an RFP or RFQ for two sites to just look at?
Just talked preliminarily with one of our on-call engineers to look at what our potential is. We haven't really moved forward, but we don't want to, we don't have any, any money to dunk into this either. So it's kind of just on a pro bono, like, hey, what do you think the, what do you think our, you know, we could, we could look at type deal?
Excuse me, but you don't, you don't need money to do this.
You need money if you're going to put out an RFQ saying, I want your services. And we can't work with somebody directly without going through the RFQ process if we're going to do Chapter 25 or similar, so...
Would it cost money to do an RFQ?
You can't say, I want somebody's services and not intend to fund those services.
But the people would...
That's really the point.
The people will fund it themselves because they make income, they make income on the solar sites that they install on town property.
We're talking about an engineer that's got to represent the town in this. We're not just going to sell ourselves to...
Third-party reviewer to help us.
Right. We need somebody from a third party to come in here and look at it from an engineer's perspective and say, from the town's perspective, this is what we need to build in to basically keep from us selling, you know, selling our souls to a third party, or to a third-party company. So that's what we're talking about as far as costs.
So in other words, you're saying that the town doesn't have enough money...
I'm saying is we don't have money appropriated for Massachusetts general laws.
The town doesn't have money to hire a consultant? Is that what you're saying?
The town does not have money appropriated to go after it at this time.
We have not asked the town to put the money into a budget to do just what you asked.
Well, can we do that in this town meeting?
Not at this point.
I would suggest if we were to do it, the best process right now is to start working with the finance committee as they start their meetings and developing the budget for next year.
No, I'm talking about at this town meeting coming up.
No.
Can we...
The same thing. You would have to, one, you would have to present something to put it on the warrant. It never got on the warrant when we opened the warrant. So it's unlikely we're going to open it just to do that. But secondly, it would still have to go through the finance committee to make it in front of any town meeting so they can make a recommendation on whether they believe it's a financially advisable expenditure. There's processes involved. We can open up the subject matter, but at that point, we pretty much hand over the concept to the finance committee saying, here's what we think, here's what we think it's going to cost. And then they've got to review it and present it in the budget. So, but that's kind of the checks and balance between the two boards, is just that.
Are you saying that the town's hands are tied because they haven't prepared to do what they need to do for forward correction? Is that what you're saying?
No. What I'm saying is we've chosen other priorities and spent our time on other things because right now, based on our understanding, there wasn't a great chance for revenue based on the money we would have to put in to get this going for town-owned. Town-owned also, just so you know, if we purchased a solar array that we would own, does not get the tax incentives. The federal tax incentives that were applicable to a private person, the 30% deduction or whatever that you could make. Secondly, anything we purchased to have installed has to be installed under prevailing wage, which is not the same price you would get as a private owner because they have to pay them mandated wage rates where private owners can hire any electrician for whatever rate they're willing to spend. So there's more involved, as well as more administrative costs for a contractor to work for municipality because they have to do the paperwork to prove those things. So it's not just cut and dry. But as I've walked through it with my other job, and I've seen how it goes, I have looked at it and said, based on the size, I believe this town could afford to invest in. I don't see necessarily something that looks financially viable that would give a true revenue because once things start failing on it, within three years, you can start having some major issues with the equipment, depending on what you get and whether that manufacturer still exists. Where all of a sudden, something that did have a 10-year warranty doesn't have a warranty because the manufacturer went insolvent because that's been the solar industry lately. Build something, make it, sell it three years, bankrupt, start again, sell it. You don't own the 10-year or 20-year warranties anymore if you don't exist. Now the owner, after five years, an inverter fails, they've got to throw $10,000 in to get that inverter replaced and also get the laborer to do it. That wasn't factored in your potential revenue. And if you're only saying you're going to earn $20,000 a year or $100,000 a year if you're lucky because of the size of the system you could get, those maintenance costs and repair costs add up quickly and unexpectedly. And they usually, when you need to do it, you're also losing all the production while you wait to get the funds to do the fix. So I'm just giving you, based on my experience, that's why I'm not diving in saying, Andrew, let's make this a priority, because I don't necessarily see it a huge benefit to the town.
I'd like to make a suggestion. We can talk about this for hours.
We could.
We could. And we don't want to do this. We have other things to do. I'd like to make a suggestion. Maybe you guys can vote. My suggestion as a citizen, and I'm representing, I guess, other citizens who are communicative, is that you have a public meeting shortly, however number of days we're required to do it, and invite this gentleman who's sat right over there to come and discuss with the selectmen and the town administrator and the town's people his theoretical proposal about how he would assist the town in generating revenue. And we should have an open meeting because right now we seem to be at odds. You, as one of the selectmen, are feeling in kind of opposition because the costs are too much. And I, as a resident, are saying that I listened to this man, and I read what Michael Hannon wrote in 2012, and we have been missing, it is, in our impression, that we are missing. So why don't we have an open meeting with this gentleman? Let him speak, he and his partner, and let him speak about what he'd like to do for the town and how he can help the town. Of course, he'll be helping himself. But he'll also help the town. And we lost $500,000 with the dump closing. And this town is, as I said before, as far as I'm concerned and other people are concerned, bleeding with lack of revenue. That's all I can say. So hopefully you'll consider my idea, and maybe you'll have a meeting with this gentleman. Thank you.
Do you guys have anything to respond to that?
We have an article on the town meeting warrant for solar. There's a moratorium in place right now because there were so many complaints about the solar systems that were being put in. So, you know, the purpose of the article is to allow re-establishment of... So, you know, and the purpose of the article is to allow re-establishment of properties moving forward. Right now, we can't do it even if we wanted to.
No, but you could at least invite this gentleman and let him talk to us about how he thinks he can help the town.
I'm not opposed to that, but I'm just saying, for you to come in and say, we're not doing anything, is somewhat misleading on your part because I think you know what the circumstances are right now. You know that there's a moratorium.
Oh yeah, I understand.
All right, all right, Sam, just a sec. We got someone else.
My question is.
Sam, Sam.
Can you have an open meeting?
You've asked that.
Okay, so let's, can we vote on it?
No.
No.
The answer is, we're not even gonna put it up for vote right now. Doesn't mean we may not do it in the future, but we're not gonna vote to set a public meeting right now. Go ahead.
If you have that public meeting with what Sam says, the town will need a consultant to see whatever this guy says is correct, right? Or.
It wouldn't necessarily hurt. I mean, I know I've got a lot of experience, if I'm at it, I would feel very comfortable that I understand what he's talking about. And I know that Andrew comes from a town that's also had a lot of experience, so he wouldn't be blind to it either. On that big picture that an open meeting would be discussing.
Okay, at that, okay.
If he was to submit a proposal with detailed layout and what he's saying, that's when it's worth having a third-party consultant say, hey, what's this worth, is, did he miss a number, is the calculation's accurate? Is he showing good information or is he showing information based on the best no clouds all summer type system versus the potential that, well, one-third of your summer is gonna have clouds and low production compared to what they're showing and therefore your revenue's not really gonna look as good as he's presenting on paper. I mean, there's a variety of reasons. And that also means when you're asking for a, a proposal or qualifications, you've gotta clarify what you're expecting them to present. So you gotta know what to ask for, otherwise everybody's gonna give their own format, their own information and you're not really gonna be caring apples to apples. So there's a variety of details that go into this, an effort that goes into this. And right now, really what we have for that is Andrew. He ends up writing all the RFQs and RFPs. And he's gotta pull that together and he's gotta pull it from, whether it's copy paste from another town and then clean it up to better fit our needs or vice versa. It's still time he's gotta do it. And right now, when it comes to the transfer station study committee, the economic development plan meetings, the QEMP meetings that we're dealing with, whether it's regionally shared services, economic development opportunities, reuse of school properties, we're pretty straight out trying to do our best to find better economic opportunities for this town and better revenues in that regard. There's a difference between bringing money into this town and the town's budget versus bringing money into this town for the town's people. And my focus is to get the money to the people more than I'm worried about getting the money for this. Cause if you guys make more money, you're not as concerned about the taxes rising. I'm not saying you're not concerned, but you understand it's, if your back pockets thickening up, you're not so worried if, at least our tax rate doesn't increase. Our costs may still increase, but the tax rate might not. We're still looking at other, when businesses come in, like the CPC, when that actually kicks off and gets going, we have a co, host community agreement that's gonna bring us in potentially anywhere from eighty to a hundred and twenty thousand a year depending on their production and their wholesale. So that's gonna be an additional revenue for at least five years at a certain, I think it was increasing each year was the estimate because they knew they're gonna have to grow into it, but I'm just, those were predicted numbers, but that's, it became, you know, a pretty solid number to stand on when we reviewed it. So we are doing that and this potential transfer station study committee may say we can either create revenue for the town that can be turned in to keep the transfer station running if we run it internally. It may say that we could actually rebid for a third-party to still run it. But now we should be able to expect the third-party to pay us to run it because they know they're gonna get those revenues. Or it may just be, we can cut all your permit costs and still manage it at the same rate so everybody using it still saves money, but it's not going directly into the town's budget. But we're looking at all of those avenues to see what we can do to help reduce the costs to the town, whether it's the individuals or the town. So we are working on it. And solar is not something we've forgotten, but it's something that I'm very familiar with the current situation. And even if we got the special town meeting and somehow got all of these solar things to go through and everything to work on, what you're still gonna find is, we missed the first week of open enrollment for the SMART program, which starts November twenty-sixth and ends within a week. And that's based on contract date, not application date. So if you don't already have a contract signed with somebody, you're at the back of the line. Which means you're already gonna get one of the lowest incentives possible. So that program right now for not only us, but for the town specifically because of national grid saturation and solar right now in this region, is not good. That individual, the reason he's brought up based on the information I've seen from the planning board and his comments in the planning board meetings as well as around here, the reason he keeps bringing up, if I could get five sites at approximately two to three megawatts each or whatever we're saying, then all of those sites together could pay for the national grid five million dollar upgrade they say they need to in order to add more solar to the, the system. So the town itself isn't gonna do it. It's gonna take four more sites at, at average two megawatts, which I'm guessing is about the size of the site on your property across the street from your way, to fit in when right now we don't even have approved bylaws that allow it anymore on R eighty sites. So we can't even begin all of that work until we know it's gonna clear. So we can't spend those finances to really dig into that or we may be just wasting the town's money looking at something that the town says, I don't want anyway.
By the way, just for your information that I heard recently, there's a company called Nexan, which is a large company.
They've been with the state in doing solar since before two thousand and nine.
And they have informed various people in other towns, and I happen to hear that they're, they're staying away from Barry because the bylaws have not been established. And that's, that's their reasoning for distancing themselves from this town currently because of, because of that.
And that's a prudent decision on their part. Because it's a waste of everybody's money spending the time planning the initial designs and putting in the energy engineering to even get ready for interconnection application with national grid. Them to come back and say, it's gonna cost this much to upgrade the system. And then maybe you're ready to apply for the incentive, which could take two to three months if you're lucky. But because this is so saturated, it's not gonna be an expedited inter, interconnection agreement process, which means it could take six months for them to tell you the construction cost to upgrade their system. And in six months from now, the incentive program we're looking at is gonna be so different than what you're looking at today. Because you're gonna be at the bottom tier of the block incentive process. So right now, Barry isn't a prime spot for an investor to want to invest in solar because of the saturation, because of the current bylaws that prevent R eighty and because of the timeline of the incentive program. The state drastically reduced the incentive with the SMART program over the previous SREC one and SREC two incentive programs. So there's a lot of issues. And we're also in the national grid's territory, which means there's limited to no net metering left. You gotta be in the smaller than a twenty-five kilowatt to get net metering. Or you've gotta be, um, I think in the small private sector, there's a small little open space in the cap left if you just fit in it just right. If you don't get that, then you're pay, you're gonna receive wholesale and what you sell back to them, seven, eight cents a kilowatt. And until you get into an incentive program, you have no other revenue. Which means you need two megawatts in order to get any value of revenue on it. Because you just don't wanna have the, the quantity of scale or the quality of the scale. So right now, it, it's not something I would advise a town to spend money pursuing until we're looking at energy storage. And it's still not time for that because the state kinda missed the boat on incentivizing that compared to solar itself.
By the way, I know that Sterling has involved in themselves in energy storage.
Yes, they have. They've got a big thing going right now.
And they did a wonderful job.
But they did it as a municipal light department, not as a town working with a separate utility company. And so it greatly benefits them to, in order to provide secure, reliable power in their town. But specifically, if I read it right, their public safety buildings. So it's not even specifically geared to cover the whole town's power supply, it was specific to certain areas, if I read it right.
And they were written up in several journals.
It's good.
They did a good job.
They did a good job and it's, it's, but the more I read about it also, there is cutting technology that's gonna cut that price almost in half and it should be available within six months. Because the batteries, there's new technology and I think if you're racing to it now, you might be hitting the very end of this current technology window. And you may buy something that's outdated two months after you install it because the new technologies become available and it's cheaper to replace.
Well, I'm glad the town has missed it.
We can't.
For, for a public festival, it's been a lot of time, we get a lot of stuff to cover.
So we're, we're in this conversation for now, but there you go.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Much appreciated.
Thank you.
All right, old business, appointment of open space and recreation committee members.
Request for appointment. Becky LaVenture and, Becky LaVenture and Kristen Shepherdson. You have two, um, letters of interest in your packet for a request to be appointed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sam. Are you interested if we wanna throw you into that list we mentioned? I guess we don't have anything on writing, but we could put it in the meeting minutes. Charlie's requested to be on that as well.
Nope.
Don't fill out the form.
But I'm willing to make a motion to include Kristen Shepherdson and Becky LaVenture and Charlie Chase in an appointment to be a part of the open space and recreation committee.
Second that motion.
Call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, we're voting you in, so you can't vote for yourself.
I should vote, I'm interested.
No, no, you're stuck now.
Stuck now. Okay, I abstained on it.
So all right, thank you very much also, Charlie, as well as Becky and Stephanie.
Did I read that Stephanie again? Did I remember that right? Kristen and Becky.
Shepherdson, Kristen Shepherdson. And Becky LaVenture.
Five twenty-five with the twenty-five thousand.
And Becky's B E K K I.
Yeah, it's, it's the authorization of.
Capital V and a LaVenture. Special town meeting warrant articles, we'll get to you. I just like to have a crowd so I don't want you running away right away, so you're the next agenda item, not this one. Thank you for giving me two minutes. Special town meeting article?
Yep.
Items.
Um, so here are, so I, I don't know if we actually wanna tick on the council on aging proposal first. So at least, cause that's one of the articles on here, so I don't know if we wanna discuss that or we discuss all the articles.
Oh, I'm confused, what do we do? We're discussing all the articles, that's what this item was about?
Well, we just have to approve it, right?
Um, I thought we were just discussing.
Okay. No, 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 this was like the placeholder for the next meeting where I talked to you about.
Ah, okay, table about them.
All right, cool. Hello, Mr. Baird, good to see you, thanks for arriving.
You guys look so good.
Thank you.
Thank you for leaving. This is the original of my patch.
Thank you. I think it's my new hair gel.
All right. With that said, that'll be tabled the next week. We'll move right on to the council on aging's proposal for changing regional transit authorities. Anybody wanna come up and present, discuss?
Thank you, Adam. The only question I would have, and I think I've figured it out, but it just allows us to discuss it a little bit more openly, is, what do you see as the benefit by switching?
Well, with the elder bus, I, um, I get a lot of complaints about the elder bus. Um, they're not as accommodating. A lot of folks need to go to Gardner and they will not go to Gardner with one person. They want two or three people at a time. Um, MART, I've worked with them in the past. They have been usually very accommodating, they provide a van. Um, they can sometimes provide a driver. Then maybe something that the town has to take on. Um, but the process for changing transit authorities is, the town has to approve it. Then, um, it has to go to the Department of Transportation, they have to approve it. And then MART has to approve it. So it, it, it is a process, it does take a while. Athol just did it and it took them a while, but they are now, um, MART.
Okay.
Hardwick has MART. They, MART has to go through Barry to get to Hardwick.
Yeah.
So it, to me, it makes sense. They are already in Barry, um, they do come in, I've seen them actually around, I don't know if anybody's seen the MART vans around, but they already.
I've seen them, but I thought it was just cause they were going to Hardwick, I wasn't sure.
No, no, it's, it's, they're helping picking up for different, um, whether it's adult day health or it's, um, medical appointments for, or PT one form or whatever it may be, but, um.
Oh, they're, so they end up coming here because they're representing the destination the person's going to, not the person in the town they're from.
The person themselves. And so it's for the person specific, when, if being here in town.
Okay. That was one of the other things I wasn't quite understanding about regional transit authorities and what borders are allowed to cross and when and why.
MART, well, MART will go anywhere in Massachusetts.
Okay.
So we could actually, um, go on day trips, which we have had a lot of requests for.
Okay.
To go on a day trip, you know, whether it's to, um, the Butterfly Museum or it's to Boston, to the Art Museum or whatever it may be. What's that?
Foxwoods.
Wait, what, no, that's different.
Springfield though.
Springfield, that's right, MGM, MGM, yeah.
Right, but you know, still, if it's what you wanna do, I got you.
So those, those are some of the requests that we had. MART, um, I know things are changing with them, with the, um, payment system and things. I'm not sure exactly what they're, what they would charge. Elder bus charges, we actually subsidize the fees right now with elder bus. And I've never done that, so that's something new for me. So we subsidize folks that ride the van right now, um, which comes out of my budget.
Okay, I get you. So our elder affairs budget is paying for the seniors from, that are working through the senior center.
Yes.
To take the ride. Like they're, you're pretty much paying a portion of their fee.
If they have a medical appointment, so they would pick them up, bring them to the medical appointment, they pay that, for that. And then to be picked up and brought home is another fee.
Okay.
So they're, you know, it's like, we, that we pay fifty cents on the toll. So if it's all a fifty, we pay the fifty cents.
Okay.
Which comes out of our budget. I don't know if they get anything off of the cherry sheet.
They might, but I just don't have the number for the town, I don't know what our regional assessment is.
One thing I had heard, and I don't know if you've done this before or heard, but I, and now this is going back about a year and a half. But I went to one of the C M R P C rural, whatever, they mentioned at the last meeting.
Rural policy.
Yeah, rural policy type seminars and one was specific to transportation. And what they were talking about was, say, a senior bus isn't fully, you can only get one person, that you can fill the rest of the bus with veterans. If you can find that they're going to the same location or same general area and kind of work it as one loop. I'm only bringing it up to find out if you've ever worked that type of, filled the bus with others type program?
We have, also disabled.
Okay.
Anybody, it doesn't matter the age.
Whatever age, disabled can also do that.
So we could transport those folks as well.
Have we done that here in Barry, or have you just done that in prior?
I don't believe Elder Bus does that.
Okay. But you think you could do that with MART?
MART MART would allow that. That's one of the stipulations is that they have, they, it's elderly and.
So that would be a benefit to the town.
Right, and that's.
Not just the elderly.
Perfect. Yes.
I worked on the S C M Elder Bus. I represented the town of Barry on the S C M Elder Bus for several years and was very dissatisfied and and tried to, and one of the reasons I was dissatisfied was the the timeframe that they would pick up people. Like they'd pick up people at nine o'clock, and then if they went into Worcester, maybe two o'clock, they'd bring them back. But when you have people who are sick, who have to go in every day, some of them have to have to go in at six thirty or whatever it is and stay a period of time. And I'm hoping, I don't know what the timeframe is gonna be for the MART bus. Is it on demand?
I know. That's something we'd have to work out.
Yeah, because I know Freddie Gramelski, when he was up in Athol, it was pretty much on demand. He called, and then there would be a vehicle that would go and pick up the person and bring them to wherever they went. But this isn't, isn't, so I'm trying to think. I I am very, very grateful that we've gotten to this point. This lady's on the right track.
Okay, I think that Barry has been,
you know, it it it's been really bad for people who are elderly.
Okay, thank you.
The transportation isn't isn't there. If you're only going two or three times a week on certain days, what about the other days?
No, I agree.
You're gonna take the ambulance?
I know my father's had the same issue. He needs assistance, and he's explained that for a period of time, he had moved to Gardner, but all his doctors are still in Worcester. So he'd end up getting a ride all the way to Worcester, get there at nine in the morning. He'd be scheduled to get picked up at two, but because his two doctor's appointments all got staggered out and pushed out, he doesn't get out of the doctor's appointment until two thirty. He's trying to figure out how to get home. And I can understand that frustration, and it's a hard thing to manage from the bus aside too. But this is where I'm hoping that some agreement could come up with providing the bus schedule as early as possible, so everybody knows this is the schedule. Like if they can say the intent is in December, this is what we're gonna do, and you're getting that now, then people can jump in and say, yeah, I wanna jump into that timeframe or that timeframe, and maybe be able to get their doctors to work with them. Maybe. And then you can start finding out when the bus is full type periods and capitalize on that. And when we can capitalize on that, then the bus company is usually more willing to work with those intermittent, I need this, I need that, because it's not everyone's, I need this, I need that. And that's a huge challenge. I, you know, I say it in two sentences, but I know it's it's a lot more work than that, and anything that you guys are doing is grace of God type stuff. Thank you. I just wanted to get it out there, because I recognize there were some positives to this, including the, now we've bridged the gap between Hardwick and the rest of the Montechusset area of rent, regional transit area. We kind of finally bridged the gap outside of them, I guess, running up through Petersham if they ever did, but still. It it just puts us in a better pocket. Now Elder Bus, so I better understand, is that like a subcontractor to WRTAs? Okay, so that's where I kept getting confused. So MART doesn't necessarily do like that subcontract thing?
They don't.
Okay. I was trying to figure out why I was, kept hearing a third party in what I thought was just two regional transit authorities, but okay.
It's like a baby of R T A.
That's how they deal with everybody that's outside the bigger cities, probably. Okay.
I got a couple of questions, Mr. Chairman. It doesn't take legislation to to do this?
Only from D O T, from my understanding, when I spoke with.
Well, it does. I I've I've reached out to Donnie Berth, he's supposed to be providing the actual wording on the on the town meeting warrant, so that way, when it's presented to the legislature, it's the correct wording. You wouldn't have to go back for any amendments.
Okay, and two other questions. Would we have to pay for any buy-in to MART? You know, because they have capital, they own the buses and the big garages around, I I know they got one in Gardner. And somebody paid for those at some point. Would we have to pay for our share of those? It'd be kind of like entering the school district.
I think probably whatever comes off of the cherry sheet. From like the same with Elder.
Stable assessments.
Okay.
Previously, I think the town was paying something like twenty-one thousand dollars to Worcester, whatever it was.
Yeah.
Year after year.
Oh, the annual fee.
An annual fee.
Yeah.
And then then people who grow, you know, take.
I was talking about like a capital type buy-in. And the other question is, obviously, the regional transit authorities have been losing money. A lot of it, particularly Central Mass, I think, lost the most of any in the state. We're not responsible for any of those accumulated losses. You know what I'm saying? I mean, they were incurred on behalf of all the member cities and towns. Someday, there's gotta be a day of reckoning here somewhere.
I don't believe so, but MART also has to approve the
Yeah.
the change. So if they don't think it's, you know, beneficial for them, I'm sure they'll.
Okay, that was my only comments.
But I, do you get any?
Nope.
All I can say is I personally support the request. I think it's the right direction, and I think we should take the steps to go through it, working with the town, town meeting, and then on up.
About ten thousands are annual cherry sheet assessment. Ten thousand. Yeah.
This is one of those things that I feel the department has purview and decision. If that's what she wants to do, I'm gonna support it on that basis, so.
Gotcha. Works for me, but I appreciate you taking the time so we could, could everybody else understand why you're asking.
Thank you. So do we, do we need to take a vote on that, or is that just?
I don't think so.
No, it's really just for your information.
Work the process to get it into the budgeting process and article process for that.
Okay.
Good luck.
The final vote will be the acceptance of the warrant.
Get it onto the annual town meeting warrant when the time comes.
Well, it's actually, it's on the special.
It's on the special.
Yeah.
Oh, it's on this one?
Yeah, yeah, it's just the physical wording.
I got confused that we already started that process.
It's the physical wording. I'm just waiting for it from Donnie's office on.
See if the wording also requires a public hearing prior to the town meeting. Because that way, we have time maybe to get the notice out and get it done.
We can do it when we do our reading the week before.
As long as we post it fourteen days before that. Otherwise, it doesn't meet public hearing requirements, I think.
So we have another week or so, week and a half.
That's right. So as long as we know early enough, we can still not miss a step.
If we can get it. Donnie's probably busy right, right now.
Yeah.
Can't attend until tomorrow, but maybe, yeah. Okay, tomorrow's Tuesday. I gotta be at that. The state office.
I see the police chief is here. Do we wanna do the police department update now? It's the next on the list anyway.
Good evening. How are you, chief?
Good, how are you?
I'm well, thank you.
So the update is personnel related mostly at this point. We have just sworn in three part-time officers, and they've started their training. One of them is working tonight, phase, the second training night, so. We're moving along with that, with the idea that obviously a full rank of part-timers. That leaves, that would leave one part-time position to fill, which we started advertising for on the website, so that we get to the fifteen. And of course, with that, we had an officer notify us that he's considering taking a position elsewhere, so that can go into more depth. Elsewhere, but he, so, you know, here we are. We're we're waiting to see if that's gonna happen or not. Other than that, we've been told that our net, our vehicle, the Silverado pickup, it's been built, it's been shipped, and then somewhere in between there and here, sitting in a truck somewhere. So we're just at the mercy of Chevrolet at this point, waiting for it to arrive. With any luck, it'll be all together before we start getting any kind of serious snow. The, we've been moving forward with the security for the building, the cameras, and we were able to get key card access. So that we can make the key cards now. That was our big problem, was we couldn't make our own, so the fire department got, our ambulance got all their cards finally, as we now have the ability to print them. And they are in the process of trying to iron out a price for the town to install the cameras that we bought that our previous I T didn't have the license to install with one addition, and that is we need a speaker system for the cell area, which we found out it's wired for, which was actually gonna save us money because we don't have to put in as expensive a camera. We don't have to have a camera that's got sound cable. So I think we're pretty close to them getting back to us with with that. We're experiencing quite a bit of trouble with our air conditioning system, and we brought in a company now under, because we have the budget for it. We pretty much worked all of that out, and they're putting regulators on to keep it within a certain range, but.
Is there any warranty to discuss on that?
It was, they were set, they were set up wrong. They were not set. They were just basically left without settings. So we've got a company that that knows how to work with them. So we're getting that. So like little by little, all of the pieces of the building are are coming together. We got inspected for use of our cells, and clearly the thing is, we can't use our cells until such time as we have cameras for anything but monitored use. And we, so we're running a last check on our our key card system, so, but the rest of everything that we have was fine. There were, there were no glaring errors or anything of that nature. They just require that we give them some electronic printouts to show that everything is in fact working. So again, we're working with our installation company. Other than that, the numbers are consistent in terms of what the guys are doing in the field. Everybody's doing a good job. Everybody seems to be, we've got, you know, all of our big cases that we had out there are going well. Obviously, we're trying to move forward with the the program, the K nine fun, fundraising program to which we're trying to set up a meeting with Attorney Beard to write the fundraising letter, give us the parameters, so that we stay within the ethics law, and all of that goes well. Other than that, we have a Christmas, a Christmas party coming up, and we also have the formal swearing in of our new officers. And that, obviously, we'll be giving invitations because it's early December, but we're doing, I think it's the thirteenth, but we'll send you something formal about that. And we have, that's really about it. Other than we really enjoyed the Barry scary Halloween.
I was gonna say, how'd Halloween go?
It was great. From our standpoint, it's the first time we had the kids come up and trick or treat through the windows of the command post, but, you know, we're a lot of kids, so.
That's nice.
We had a good time. Officer said that they got nothing but good feedback from everybody walking around. Everybody was having a good time, so. Pretty busy for us, but that was good.
Nice. I'm glad to hear that, because I know it was a huge jump from one year to the next in the total number of people that showed up, so I'm glad. Still worked within your kind of boundaries and, you know what I mean?
Right, it did. Well, they showed up a lot earlier than we expected, since it was posted as six o'clock. At five fifteen, the cars were unloaded, so.
Yeah, they were, they were, they were gathering across the street from my house down in the Rice Park that was full of cars all night, so.
It's a good thing.
No, it's good. I'm glad you had that.
Oh, I will say, you saw in the the warrant, tasers changed its policy. It is gonna be more expensive to have tasers. They no longer let you purchase them. You now have to be part of a five-year plan. So, you know, ours are all coming to the end of their life. It's not, we're starting to have breakdowns. They don't, you know, we're in the period where they don't have parts or they don't fix them, or they don't service anything regarding the ones we have, and it's gonna trickle down to there's nothing they can do in a year. So they have introduced a depressing plan. We put in the first step for a warrant. That's why you see that in the warrant. It's basically, the only way you can have a taser now is to, it's a yearly fee, basically. I mean, they own them at the end of that fee, but then by the time you own them, they'll have another model, and they'll stop servicing us, like in every five year. The good news for the town of Barry is that we weren't in a previous service agreement, because they did have them before. They just didn't require them. So that as they get enabled, they've put out a new model. We'll be getting into it the first year, which means we'll get the most use out of it. If you get into it in the second year, I'd be probably have three years left of that model, so. Timing wise, it's good for us. Financially, it just means it's gonna, but we'd have to buy parts. We'd have to buy cartridges with ammunition. All of that gets figured in. They say, you know, it's it's a wash. It's really the same money to spend, but bottom line is they've changed the way they do it. And so we have to change the way we purchase them, you know, so it's budgetary, I don't know.
How many tasers are you looking for?
Well, well, we, we're looking for seven or eight. We have five. We'll settle with five or six. We just have to get into the right price point, you know. They're designed to give one officer, each officer has their own taser. We just can't do that, so.
That's what's gonna get towards is it's something we can have on the shelf that they pick up each day as a service piece and not have it like, obviously, they all have their own service weapons, but
Yeah, they do.
Be nice to not have to have a taser.
Right, they, we, we share them. I'd rather not share them, but it's cost prohibitive to have one for every officer. So we have five, which is why I'd like to get to seven or eight, so that we can assign some out and have some for, you know, say, like the two most junior officers to share or something like that. Because they will last longer if one guy uses it rather than sharing it. I'd like to get there, but it's cost prohibitive, so we need closer. Also, if, you know, one breaks down, like, you know, there's gonna be a few weeks while it's out of service, so we'd like to not be reliant on it just enough. Again, they're, they're not making it cheap. They're just, you know, making it available, so.
Quick question. Is this concept of lease, an all-inclusive, you pay it, and no matter what happens, you just send it back, they bring it back, and it's working?
Yes, if you get the right program. And so that's why we're the right plan. So we're working on, they they presented a plan, and then we looked at it very carefully, and some of your training cartridges were still on expense. So that was with eight. So we're trying to move, if we move back to seven, can we get the same price, but it incorporates everything. You know, every officer that touches it, every cartridge we need, all maintenance, you know, if it gets crushed, you get a new one. So we're trying for that plan. They do have a plan. We're just working out the details, see how many we can get for the price point that we're looking at.
Are they only available from one source?
That was my question.
Yes.
You are not legally allowed? Is that the issue?
No, there's, there was another company that started up to try to compete, and it fell apart. Apparently, there's too many problems. The reason that, it really is the only game in town for electronic weapon. They're starting to have other types of of weapons that fire pepper spray, but they fire it as a capsule. But there's not enough, there aren't enough successes right now. None of the departments have them for other departments to know that it's a good idea to move to that. So really, if you want a taser, and they do support it, and the thing is, they support it with training and they support it legally. So if you want a taser, you have to buy from this company.
What's the range with the tasers you're getting?
Interesting question, because the range is about twenty-five feet, but the newer model shortens that, because having a twenty-five foot range means you have to have to move eight feet away from you when you shoot them, preferably twelve.
Too fast at that proximity.
It's too far, so they've actually changed their model to give you a shot at four feet. It's never been about how far, because the dart's spread, you know, so you can entirely miss the person at fifteen feet. So now the the technology is, officers are gonna be in close and able to use them, and that's actually better for us.
All right.
Thank you.
I appreciate the update, sir. Thank you. Thank you. Barry Lions Club, Christmas in Barry. Barry Lyons Club, Christmas in Barry.
Just right now, I think all the paperwork's been filled out and approved for having the parade in, in Barry. I've met with the police chief and the fire chief, and they're on board. Gonna have to come up with a few volunteers to help block off some of the streets, to stand by some of the soft horses. And the parade will start at Ruggles Lane School, go down Ruggles Lane, actually, cut, so it'll start at Ruggles Lane, and then it'll go down Broad Street, then it'll be going the, the wrong way on Exchange, Crossover 122, to go down South Street, and then we'll take a break onto Common Street, and it'll end, you know, basically the same as what it's been. So, the police and fire are on board, you gentlemen are welcome to march in the parade if you, if you'd like.
I expect I'll be there, assuming that they'll let me again.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And lineup is between eleven-thirty and twelve-fifteen, and the parade will start right at twelve-fifteen. And we're trying to get people, you know, different people with antique cars, floats, even pet, pet owners, you know, they have, you know, yeah, with the Christmas theme, you know, tractors, horses, selectmen, you know, and, and even the...
I don't know the way to say that.
Anybody got a selectman, you can bring him and parade him down the street with the rest?
What was the date of that again?
That's December first, which is a Saturday.
Perfect.
And right now, we're, I'm waiting for the phone to ring with people that would be in it.
No, that would be great. And what else did I see? And you sent out, the Lyons Club sent something out about, what, decorating, or like, lights, or, I thought I saw something about...
We, we, we still do that, Sharon and I do that, the two remaining members.
No, I thought that was a Facebook post about something, inviting people to, whether it's decorate your own vehicle, or...
Oh, in the parade, you mean?
Yes, that's, that's the parade part, that, that was it.
So, which would be a little different, like you're saying, from previous years, where you can bring your car, but then, I shouldn't say different, but I'm hearing it different than historically, just about getting it out there, like, if you got an old truck, it's okay, just decorate it. I know I've seen them before, and, but, first time I've heard it, so I was trying to better understand, and say it publicly.
Kinda hated to see it come to an end, because, you know, with the original committee kinda stepped aside, and the Lyons Club itself, you know, there were a lot to swallow, and they go, it's the only way to be a parade if somebody...
No, I was...
Took this over, so, I stepped up, and, 'cause I like being there, you know?
I appreciate it, and it's, it's similar to everything, and it takes, takes an effort, it doesn't just happen, and most people that show up at the event don't understand the workings it took to have the event, and the previous committee, and the one before that, 'cause I remember you telling me that you guys kinda inherited that also from a previous group, put a lot in to make it happen every year, year in and year in for... When did it begin? At least two, three decades ago, or it's like, it's... So, I appreciate the Lyons Club in stepping up to help keep this going while we try to rebuild those that can get back into annually keeping it going.
It's something that people of Barry look forward to, you know, a lot of people turn up and...
I know I do.
Yeah, I do.
And I don't have kids, I still like to go down there and smile once in a while.
So, right now, I think we're all set, what we needed for paperwork and all that stuff.
I recall the special event, as well as the use, all of that's in place, right?
Sharon took care of that, July, June, July.
Yeah, yeah.
And then this, this part of the parade part was just submitted, so that was...
Yeah, it was just, we wanted, we wanted to make sure that all the departments, a little bit closer to the event, saw it, so, basically, just now that everything's been locked down, get in front of you guys for the formal blessing.
So, we are looking for a vote on the parade route?
Give them a formal vote on the parade route.
You mentioned having volunteers stand at some of the barriers, is that something you've talked about with the chief of police, or typically, okay, 'cause any kind of road closures into that jurisdiction and...
Right, 'cause it said barricades, at the time, you said you'd probably only have, like, three officers, maybe four, and I gotta come up with probably four people to stand.
Four is what we're thinking, okay.
If you need vests, you could probably borrow vests from the fire department, they should have some safety vests on, and even though it's daytime, just when they're in the road, that's all I would say.
You know, that's what we're looking to do, and maybe even some of the people that live at the different intersections, if it's by your house, volunteer, you know, give me a call and volunteer.
Yeah, absolutely.
And, and that would be a big help.
These more the barricades primarily up and down Ruggles Lane?
That, that would be...
Broad Street, I mean?
Yeah, that'd be like Winter Street.
Okay, the side streets that come into the...
High Street, is High Street in there?
Yes, the High Street North, Winter Street.
No, no. Union.
Union.
Union, okay, that's the one right there, Union, and, uh, okay.
Make a motion to approve the parade route for Christmas in Barry.
Okay. Any further discussion? Call for vote.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, Sam. Appreciate all you're doing.
Thanks for, do you want this? We'll keep it, thank you. Yeah, it's nice that it got presented, but it's also nice that we had a chance to, once again, tell the world over the cameras and those that came to the meeting, more about it. And as a reminder, they are looking for volunteers to help with the barricades on the parade route. Reach out to the Lyons Club, or if you can't get ahold of them, speak to the town administrator's office, and they can help close the loop, even if it's just giving you another phone number to call. Next, marijuana local license bylaw discussion. I know Andrew had made a couple revisions based on previous comments we had at the last meeting. You got anything to bring up, or does another selectman wanna take the lead on this?
Greg had just pointed out to me, he just had requested that under item. Let's see, section?
Prohibiting giving marijuana or, or products away for...
Or as gifts?
Yes, when I said, or gift cards.
Yeah, just that small.
Okay, just a similar...
Little loophole, they told, we didn't give any away, we give a card away.
Well, it's the same thing.
Yeah.
If you give away the product, so...
Yeah, that's...
Otherwise, I've read through as quick as I could, nothing else stood out. And that was like fifteen minutes to read it, I could take more, but I don't think it's gonna be necessary.
Could I ask a question, is this gonna be lengthy?
I don't, I don't think so.
No, I, the reason I brought it up is 'cause I really thought this was a quick cut-and-drive. We don't have a lot of debate, we've already did it last week.
We're not, we're really, really sweeping, sure.
Yeah. We're halfway done with this one, put it that way.
Yeah, do you, did you have something specific on the agenda, or something else you wanted to...
Yes, we did, but it didn't get on the agenda.
Oh, so you don't have something on the agenda, you have something you just wanna discuss? Which is okay.
Not really discussed even, but, um...
Are we okay to move on to the next?
That's up to you.
Go ahead and bring it up.
All right. Okay, we were told that people wanted to know what committees were in town, and were not aware that there was a Ware River Watershed Advisory Committee, and so we're on the Ware River Watershed Advisory Committee, this is Hermak.
Good to meet you, Herm.
Tell them what you do.
Well, I'm actually, I work for the Department of Conservation and Recreation.
Okay.
And this committee was set up by Senator Brewer back in nineteen ninety-five, I think, and Ed, their first meeting in ninety-seven, and we've been meeting for over twenty years now, so...
Oh, all right.
The idea is just to get some input from various groups, and they're all outlined here, but some of them are appointed by the selectmen of four of the major towns in the watershed.
Okay. And so I represent the town of Barry and have for twenty years, and Ed has been here for, yeah, and he's been the ultimate here, so there is also Margaret Pentecron, she represents Barry Historical Society, the five towns, Barry, Oakham, Rutland...
Hubbardston.
Hubbardston, Oakham, did I say Oakham? That's it.
That's a...
All, all have representatives, and all, all we do is, we have meetings, uh, every couple of...
At, at least twice a year, but sometimes, it's usually four, five, six times a year.
And most of the meeting is related to public access and use.
Okay.
So, there is another watershed advisory committee, and that's up at the club, and I don't know whether there's another one down at the Wachusett.
There's not at the Wachusett right now, but there is one also at the, at the club.
Okay, and so, I think there are a lot of things that have happened when, since this committee was formed, and one of the things is the rail trail that runs through the watershed, and Ed has been, oh, I, I guess the star man to get that all done, and it's, and so that has certain use, so you can ride bicycles, you can walk, you can walk your dog, but it has to be on a leash. I don't believe you can do horses, so the whole thing is, there's a snowmobile trail that has been developed, and snowmobiles are supposed to only go in that area. There's a horse trails that can be used, but, you know, the horses aren't supposed to go outside of that, so what, there's been designated areas for people to enjoy what's out there in that watershed, and, um...
We occasionally met at the old town hall here in Barry, and, uh, thank you folks for allowing us to do that on occasion, and that comes up.
I may have actually seen that once in the last couple of years, I think I saw the request, and I didn't know who it was at the time.
Right, right.
Might have been three years ago, I forget, but I do remember, I think, it crossing the table.
The first meeting was actually at the library in town here, I've already been a part of it for quite some time.
Nice.
I think we understand that we are only advisory to DCR, Division of Watershed Protection, but I think that we can thank Senator Brewer for wanting to give public access a vote, that there were forces in the MDC at the time, that would probably have preferred to just put a barbed wire fence around all of it and say, this is watershed protection, so I think we thank the senator for that, absolutely. And, and I would say most of our time probably gets spent with the more controversial users, sometimes snowmobiles, sometimes horses, and, and there's been some misunderstanding as to which horse trails are infected, which trails are passe and, and need to be looked at again, but most of the time, we've spent on mountain biking, which is different from street biking on the rail trail, and it has been those meetings that have brought a large multitude to public, wanting to argue their case, and those have been the meetings that we've held in the larger halls in Barry and in Rutland, but we just, I think we want you to, to know that the town is represented there, we try to do our best, and most of us do really identify with the protection of the water supply, even though it's for people to the east.
Yeah, it's one of many advisory committees that we deal with, of course, and also, yeah...
What is it about the mountain biking that many people oppose?
It's pretty steep and it erodes, erodes the...
They do, they are not satisfied with fairly low roads, nice wide gravel driveways, they want to single-track through the woods and steep, steep slopes that again lead to erosion.
It's a challenge for a lot of, a lot of folks, it, it needs to be designed so that our number-one use is, is water, obviously, that's why those lands were taken, uh, people in this area back in the twenties and thirties, nineteen twenties and thirties, so, and it's also regulated by, it's a, a water supply that is unfiltered, which means that it had to go through a process to get a waiver from environmental protection agency to be unfiltered, and, so they're kinda looking over our shoulder, too, and making sure that they don't do anything that's gonna cause any kind of water quality issues, so it's just balancing some of the recreation versus water quality and some of those things.
Okay, I would, I just, that's one thing people have brought to me that I didn't have a good answer on, is I, prior, in, now, we're going back some years, I would mountain bike on trails that were, you can mountain bike on, whether it was like Callahan State Park at the time, had some in Framingham, Marlboro kinda area, there was a couple that we'd go to, um, but I never noticed what seemed like excessive erosion, and so I didn't understand how, if you, how that became the argument, like, how is that really affecting the water supply, 'cause it's not a motorized bike, so it's, I, I got confused, I didn't know how to answer that question.
Yeah, they're at a point right now, where every ten years, we redo what we call a recreational access, and have a plan, one of many plans that we work under, but that one gets a lot of attention from the public, 'cause that's what the public is passionate about, the kind of recreation that they like to do, and we happen to be at, near the, the tenure where we do kind of a more of a major revamp of that plan, so this is, if you've got comments or people in town have comments on what they wanna see or honestly as far as recreation on some of those public lands, come to those meetings or letting Martha and Ed know what those concerns are, or call me.
What is the best place for someone to figure out when those meetings and where those meetings are being held?
It's on our website, there is a mailing list that you can get on.
DCR website?
It should be, yeah, it's, it's underwater shit, it's public access.
And, and do town, do town post, oh, sure.
Uh, we have posted it when we're meeting here in, at the, Barry, we also meet a lot lately in Rutland, at the library, we've met at the school in Hubbardston in the past, um...
I did see it on the Mindtown government, something with Ware, but I didn't look into it deeply at the, I was just...
I think we, we can have someone send it so that it can be posted on, at the town if you want.
No, I, maybe at least if we can even have a link to it or something on our website, just so that people in town that wanna know, how do I contact someone if I do have this question, or I think it's, because like you said, if we're hitting that ten-year re-review, rewrite, now's your voice, or you're gonna wait for another ten years before anything really significantly changes?
Yeah, we're trying to work some more into that plan, so it's a little more flexible, that you can make some, some minor tweaking along the way, that you're not kinda stuck with something, 'cause lots of changes in ten years, you know?
Right, there'll be hoverbikes, no erosion.
Which I...
Recent, recent concern by DCR, talking about erosion, did have to do with some unauthorized construction of mountain bike trails, which involved quite a bit of dirt moving and shelf-making and log retaining walls, that when DCR discovered that, that caused quite a temper tantrum, which I think heated up our meetings for about six months, but we think we're back on the level.
Gotcha. All right, well, I appreciate you taking the time to answer that. I definitely appreciate you taking the time to introduce yourself, and kind of, once again, bring back to light, this is something that's part of our, our government... this is something that's part of our, our governmental process and our use of land around here and.
It's about twenty-five thousand acres out there and probably five or six of it's in the town of Berry, so.
I think it's important, I think it's important that people know that you have a committee doing this, because people take for granted the fact that those trails are there. And the fact is, without this committee, having voice of DCR, those trails wouldn't be there. And I think it's very important that people understand that part of it and consider putting some time in the committee if they want to be involved. It's, that's, that point wasn't taken lightly by me, the fact that DCR would have just shut it all down. Lots, lots of people use this for those different aspects, and they wouldn't have that without committees like this. Thank you all very much.
By the way, is MWR a part of DCR?
No.
Or is it the other way around?
The MW, it used to be called the Metropolitan District Commission. And back in nineteen eighty-four, they separated out, they did a quasi-public agency called the Mass Water Resources Authority, which is the MWR. They are care and control of the main infrastructure, the pipes.
Okay, so the, the. The aqueduct connecting the reservoir.
What is now DCR or what was MDC was maintain care and control of the lands around it. So it's, being an unfiltered water supply, the forest, that land around it really is your filter.
Okay.
And so, and I think that also had to do with some of the, I think Senator Brewer and some folks wanted to make sure that they, they main control that, so they could have these kind of advisory committees and things like that, so the people around would still have a voice on what would happen there. That all went, the MWA, MWA doesn't directly answer to, you know, they're not the executive branch exactly office, so the DCR is, so.
I got you.
If people have a little more say on what can happen there.
They're one step further removed from accountability. I'm in, answering to someone.
Yeah, but the.
I'm just having fun.
In this Berry area, I think this is the, the most dangerous, or, you know, you only have the water going one way. You only have that flow to the Waukesha reservoir and on. There is, there isn't a duplicate. So if anything ever happened, that would really mess up the whole thing.
I got you.
The, the aqueduct that connects them, please.
So that they don't want anybody around where the dam is at shaft eight or, you know?
Yeah, some areas are more sensitive than others out there as far as the infrastructure and the water goes. And they, they use it mostly in more, more droughty conditions.
Otherwise, the closer reservoirs along the line.
The, most of the, the best water comes out of Quab, and so they try to use that the most. I mean, this summer they started, I think, May fifteenth or sixteenth and ran that. It runs like a river, even through the Waukesha reservoir, so it's a little cooler temperature, a little different temperature of water, so it can kind of run like.
I remember reading something like that about the different, I forget what you call it, the, the zones of water.
It's stratified, so, you know, so you get water coming into the aqueduct. It's down there quite a ways, so it's a little cooler down there. When they run it through like that, you get your best water, which keeps your cost, treatment cost. It's, it's not filtered, but it is treated, so even some of the stuff you've got to do to treat it keeps costs down, so. And there's plenty of water this summer to just do that, just to run that all right out of Quab.
Like I saw a video of them, they done some of the annual dives, exploring it, and it's amazing how clear that water is down there, man, at the bottom.
You can see even from one side, if you've ever been to the Baffle dams out there, where the water coming out of the east branch and out of the Ware River, when it's diverted into there. You can stand on the Baffle and look on one side of it, and the east side is a little easier than the west side. By the time that water travels up around Mount Zion, which is a fairly large island there, it's about three and a half miles long, it, it really clears, clears it up just from one side.
It settles down and drops out.
It takes some time to, to navigate that water around there, but it does it. It's a little less color in it when it gets around the other side, it's very clear when you get to that western side of that Baffle dam.
Nice.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Much appreciated, and thanks again.
Thank you.
Give us a call.
You got it.
Give you my number.
We have, uh, we have a space committee in recreation, we may have to.
Back to Mayor Juan Valdez.
Yeah, we'll go back to that.
I read through it and made my suggestion to Andrew already, which is just that piece, so.
Man, I read through it, I think I'm good enough now where I wouldn't want to even suggest anything until we've had any feedback from the planning board.
From the planning board?
And got a draft from them, so we can actually kind of go back and forth. Otherwise, we're just modifying this for the sake of modifying it.
I'm curious to see what their draft brings, what we talk about.
I understand they're meeting tonight.
Yeah.
I guess they rescheduled because tomorrow's election day or whatever.
Whatever.
Well, I mean, they may have had their own reasons.
I'll just say, oh, it's election day, all right.
Let us, we got to get like a preliminary draft from Doug. It didn't look like there was a ton of changes from what was presented from, uh, from spe, or from the annual town meeting. I thought I had put a, a copy in your packet, but I must have printed it off and put it off to the side. So I'll just, I'll give you guys a copy of that afterward.
Just email it?
Yeah, I'll email it all along.
Appreciate it.
It was, it was just in word format. But yeah, I mean, we'll see what, what changes they make after tonight.
Sounds good. Let's see, we have a, well, we'll get back to that after. I guess the next item, if we're okay with it, holiday hours. I'm guessing you brought this up for town office hours?
Yeah, town office hours, so I provided you a few calendar printouts, basically the next two months. What we're looking at for closed days between town, town hall and library. Because whenever the town hall is closed on a Monday, the library is closed previous Saturday, since they don't open on Mondays. So, uh, basically it'd be Veterans Day the twelfth, Half Business Day on Wednesday the twenty-first, closed for Thanksgiving Day. The library closed December twenty-second, with the town offices closed December twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth for Christmas. And then Tuesday, the first for New Years.
And this year the library closed the tenth.
Why are they closed on the twenty-second, Saturday?
Why are we?
Why is the library closing December twenty-second?
Because Christmas is observed on Monday.
And they don't, they don't work Mondays, so they take the Saturday off.
Christmas is observed on Tuesday, the twenty-fifth. Christmas Eve is Monday.
But the offices are closed Monday, because.
Well, that's not a holiday observance, that's just giving someone the day off the day before the holiday because they're connected. You get the day off to prepare for the next day.
Right, but the town employees are getting that day off, and the library's going to get the day before off, because they don't know they work Monday. I understand.
We're a very nice town.
I like to think so.
We're giving a lot of extra time off that is no way included in the personnel policy, and we just give it to them. I'm just saying that, that's why you hear me sometimes come back saying, you're doing what? I'm just being honest, it's.
I'm a Scrooge sometimes, do about stuff, but not this.
That's not a Scrooge thing.
Yes, it is.
Not at all.
It's all right.
Who else has a job that gets Christmas Eve day off paid? So it's not a Scrooge job?
No, it's, it's, I'm saying.
It's just saying, don't treat them different than the rest of the world.
I'm saying the library, the library is just getting what everyone else is getting, that's all.
Typically, if.
Did Palmer do this?
Yes.
They gave a whole day off before Christmas and a half day off before Thanksgiving.
They also had administrative union contract that gave it to them.
Oh, they had a union?
They had administrative union, yeah. When they had Fridays, they also had.
Sorry, Palmer got the union in, they got screwed.
They also, uh, when they had Fridays, they had Black Friday off.
I'm sorry, you came from, I don't know. I don't know where you came from.
Well, you don't, you don't even made it worse, once women went to a four-day work week, but the union protection still came in, so you got some weird days off. So if it was an observance on a, on a Friday, typically, or even on a Saturday, Friday's town hall was closed, the observance was on a Thursday.
I tell you what, I have to make a motion, go ahead and close the town hall on Friday for Black Friday. Isn't it closed anyways? See, I don't have a problem with closing a Black Friday.
I'll give that in lieu of the Christmas Eve day.
There you go.
What about the day before New Years?
Yeah, New Years is not.
Yeah, that's the way I look at New Years.
Yeah, but.
New Year's Eve you're talking about? Yeah.
Yeah. I just look at New Years as a day on a calendar.
Yeah.
New Year's Day is recovery for New Year's Eve, so that's why you take New Year's Day off.
Right, but New Year's Eve.
Until you reach about my age, you guys have all apparently reached it.
I, I do think.
Kind of let me know, let me know that I'm, I don't have your years of experience, is all I mean.
I, I think that New Year's Eve is a bit of a stretch. That's a bit of a stretch, New Year's Eve, I mean. The celebrations aren't till overnight, there's, there's no reason to have a whole day off of that. So I think we ought to strike that.
Well, it's not.
No, it wasn't even on there, I just, I just.
This is, this is fine.
Yeah, he's not recommending closed, he's recommending closed on.
Oh, just close there, so we're not, okay, gotcha.
I did the same thing at first, though.
Close this and so highlight it, okay, I see. But New Year's Day, sure.
Yeah.
Call it the hangover day.
In a lot of companies, did it, you'd get the hot day the day before Christmas. They close, like, you go in the eight, you get out at nine.
Right, I think that's more.
I'm too used to working for ingrained, me, city of Worcester and previous federal government contractor stuff, where if you're lucky, what you got was to email at about two o'clock that said, the big boss said you can go home. But they never told you the day before, the week before, the month before, because they waited till. So I look at it saying, we're, we're a month and a half out, and we're already giving them the day off, and we don't even know what the workload will be that day.
But I promise, it's a Monday, so it's kind of like, even if you were to say half a day.
It means it's a two-day work week, is what it means, which is also a useless work week for many people.
Somebody, if they don't make it Thursday, they have to wait for the next day or something.
Well, and you look at the other side.
And it's the other part is.
Everyone has their kids out of the week.
Town offices being open for the general public who you serve, well, we're limiting that by closing the offices. It's not just giving a gift to employees. We're shutting down the treasurer's office and.
Well, by doing early, by doing early enough, they know what date it is open to come in.
I do know that the town has gotten used to this, so they're not usually running to the office to do business on that day, but it happens, it does. Paul? Will you guys make a motion?
I make a motion to accept the holiday schedule. And that's proposed by Andrew here.
Any further discussion? I'll call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye.
I'm going to be the Scrooge and say no.
Go right ahead.
It's one of those, what do, what do you call it, the, uh.
As long as you.
The paperwork vote that you knew wasn't going to go in.
As long as you end that with motion.
You go back saying, I didn't say just spend all the town's money for nothing.
I'll try to get some work done for Paul, I think.
Working on some eggnog, is that what you?
Probably, yeah, let's be real. Actually, typically we do our, um, the fire department does Santa visits that day, so.
Oh, you were saying that last year, yeah.
Yeah. We might change it a little bit up this year, try to see more kids by set, having some set roots on a day other than Christmas Eve. We'll see how it plays out.
It's a challenge.
Yeah.
All right, so with that, the only two other items we have are selectmen's reports and town administrator report. I'll start with Greg, do you have anything you'd like to report on?
I do not.
Charlie, do you have anything you'd like to report on?
No, not tonight.
My report was everything I already said in the meeting today. Various little things about economic development, things we're trying to do, so I'm done with that.
Do want to just inquire about a couple of old business things. You know?
If it wasn't on there, we can't just make it up.
Well, it was on there, just going back to old business.
No, not the generic name old business, the specific old business agenda item.
No, I just want to not, not really discuss it, I just want to, I just want to bring up to Andrew in touch base, but see what we're doing with looking expenses for running cable or, or things like that, looking for an update as well as, um, I've asked for almost a year now to try to get some funding set up with Hardwick for the senior center, that we agreed at the meeting that it would pick up their share, and we've never heard anything back on that. So just want to do reminders on those things.
Can comment on both of those, actually.
So that's, that's the only things I have kicking in back of my head right now that have been kind of.
I, I have been, yeah, I have been in discussions with the town administrator, Hardwick, about that issue. She said she was going to be putting it on as a Warren article for their special town meeting to fund it at the, at the discussed amount that we had talked about, I believe was, about bringing it up to like seventeen thousand.
Seventeen or eighteen thousand.
Right, which would have, which showed a twenty-three percent, you know, their, twenty-three percent share of the budget.
Participation.
Which is what their participation level's been.
Okay.
Um, and we can show, we can show that through data, too, so.
And that would help us either, A, help, help our town coffers summon on her budget, but also I, I, I'd more like to see, since we're accustomed to that spending, that's money we could use towards the mark bus and things that she's looking to have done there.
Yeah.
If it does come up with funding or, or part, our part paper shares, so I.
Funding might better help the individual service requests or.
Yes, I.
Things that come up.
I, I said initially that we can save some on our coffers, because it's a payment we're making, but I'd really rather see it stay towards the senior center and let that go into her coffers. So if we have to handle that money specifically, I'd like to make sure we direct it to her budget. There's an increase in her budget whenever we get in from them, on top of what we normally provide. That's, because this thing, she'd still like, maybe more laptops, she'd like busing stuff. This would allow maybe help funding some events, some day trips or events partially funded by them. Maybe some, you know, heaven forbid they do a banquet or a dinner, have a dance, do something for the seniors, like a, you know, just to get out and dance.
So you two have heard his request. As you're building the budget, the funds from Hardwick, he's looking to have not go to the general fund, but go specifically back into the senior center elder affairs budget line items.
Allow.
My understanding it goes to the general fund first, doesn't it? Because I was thinking at first it would go back to the senior center, but.
So we'd have to allocate it.
So you'd have to put it in the budget, say, and put this much.
And take it over, and we could discuss with her, when you get to talk to her, what kind of funds are coming in and, and give her just an idea of what, what kind of things, I mean, we'll talk to her again. I'd love to see her pick up more projects for the seniors, and like, I, I go back to things I see Groton do, and they get a lot of fundraises. But they do a couple of parties a year where they put on just like a big bash, like, like a ball. They, they, they have music, they do dancing, they have raffles and just cook for them, and, um, they have really good participation. It's, how often, how often they have events?
The, I was saying, you know, that my, because I know I've heard quite a few have had problems when they don't have transportation.
And if that part fund is coming out of her budget now, that would help us that, with that as well. So rather than us try to change our line item and save what we're paying her, we, we're going to pay that whether we had Hardwick or not. I'd just like to be able to try to make sure that that, those funds go that way, so.
Yeah, okay, sounds good. So as far as cable, um, we've had a discussion today during our regional economic development committee, meeting, uh, between the towns with the economic development director. And on December third, we're going to have, um, the USDA's area director come in, talk to, talk to us about the Community Connect program that they offer. That is basically a grant program that they give to towns for running cable, so.
Running your own cable or funding cable in the town, no matter who owns it?
Correct, so funding the coverage gaps.
What time is that scheduled?
That's ten o'clock, right here. Yep, so, December third.
December third.
Yeah, so.
I count on you, I can't make that.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's called the Community, uh, Community Connect Grant Program. They've been working a lot with the towns in the Berkshires on the, on the last mile, with the last mile program, so we are trying to get them. They have a lot of resources, so get them to the table to understand what our coverage gaps are, because with.
Do we know what our coverage gaps are? Have you gotten that from the cable company yet?
Other than that, that general map that I sent out, I haven't gotten anything, even despite what I keep on coming back to them. But I want to talk to them then about, uh, gap assessment, whether or not that's something that they'll assess with, or assist us with, too.
We only have, what, eighty-seven miles of roads?
Right.
There's nothing in our contract with them that says anything about record keeping? There's nothing in our contract with them that says anything about record keeping? To even know where they have cable?
I couldn't say without a.
I'm sure they know they have cable, but they may not.
That's all they're going to tell us, cause then we can take our street listing and just compare the two and say, they're on these streets, but they're not on these streets. But that's not complete because Loring Drive, parts of it have it, parts of it don't, so you can't do it just by street. You've got to actually know what sections of the street are covered.
I mean, it's not that difficult to look at the poles and see whether, you know, the phones are the lowest and cables above it.
Just having time to drive every pole.
Yeah, well.
I hear you, I just, what I was trying to get at is they've got to have something that says, here's the map, it's right here.
You would think they know where all this stuff is.
They, they have to know where their lines are.
They've got to.
I used to say that, but National Grid doesn't even know what their own power lines are. So how in the world can you expect a cable company to care where they put a wire up as long as they're getting paid by an account?
They've got to know where.
They know the addresses, but they don't all know the details of wire connects a pole to pole to pole to pole until they have to look it up. That's the best answer I've got on that, cause you, you can ask a million people and they just kind of look back at you like, ah.
Ain't nowhere to go.
That's, cause the engineers are the only ones that know and they don't share the information. You talk generally to customer service people, salespeople, you don't end up talking to the people that know.
Cause all they're going to pull off is a name and an address on the bill sheet, they have no clue.
I did get, I did get a map from them, but it wasn't a very detailed map, it was pretty rudimentary and it was just kind of like, yeah, this is about where we have cable lines, so.
More of a zone area drawn for us.
Yeah, I mean, it was like, you know, you think of like if you were going to do a Google map, but then if you made the, the line soup like.
Real fat.
Real fat, so it's like, I, I don't even know what street's underneath there. So, or is there a gap between here and there or is, you know, where on the street does it actually break off? So I, I mean, I'm sure that they have a general line. I'm sure if I push them a little bit more, I can probably get, get something more out of it. I think, but if we use a little bit of pressure from the USDA to leverage it, I think that it's going to be, having higher voices kind of advocating for us.
But which, which side helps, you know, it would be better you were talking to the USDA.
Contact and vote to us.
Yeah.
So we as political people can play the game of, we've been asking.
Before the government.
You don't want us to ask, you don't want above us to ask, please.
Yes, Ted.
Interesting situation where the Hardwick just brought the cable down my street, part of my streets in Hardwick. So I'm three sections away from the Hardwick line, but it's a different company, okay?
Oh, you get, they get Comcast or something?
Assistant pole electric, cause my electric comes from Hardwick. So the Barry company is not going to want to come out to my house. The thing I'm wondering, if there's other situations like that, whether the Barry company can make a deal somehow with a town that's near it to feed some of the Barry stuff a lot less expensive. I don't know if that could be done or not, so I'm not sure legally who has rights to which town.
And I did talk to Donnie Bertham about both, about Ted's issue and this issue, so I can try to get some legislative support on it, so.
Okay.
I think it depends on the contract, how that's going to be written, if, if they have exclusive rights, you know, in town versus if, if it's competitive pricing. I know the town, I think the town gets, um, special treatment for the contract for having the sole rights to the contract. I'm not sure of that. But I think that's, it is a sort of monopoly for them. But if they don't want to cover it, I don't know why they would argue against getting on from the other company.
Who knows? Cause I know that.
Comes a long-term territorial war of.
And that's something to look at the contracts, if they're not going to, you know, if they don't cover certain areas in a certain amount of time, we should be able to do something else with it.
I believe we looked at the contract and I think the contract had certain areas of expansion that were required over a ten-year period, but only portions of the town were included. It's not the whole town will be covered by ten years.
Ten houses per mile.
Ten houses per mile, which is almost no place in town.
That's, that's their, their requirement, or that's what was negotiated, the negotiation.
It's a horrible contract.
And that's at their cost.
Together.
At their cost.
They should have had to guarantee the full coverage.
I'm not asking at their cost, I'm asking, cover it so the town knows what it's going to cost us to get it covered, but we don't want to be the long-term manager of the system. So we'll work out a deal with you to get it done and then you get all those customers and we can move forward. But we're not going to be the person called to go fix it when a tree falls on it because we aren't hiring that. But if it means like with National Grid, oh, you want to build a house here, well, you've got to spend, you know, a thousand feet of power lines to get to your house so you can get power, well, the customer owns that. But National Grid owns the wires, you still got to pay National Grid to install them. But then they take the maintenance based on your, your maintenance cost and your electric rate. I'm suggesting we just go to the cable company and ask the same thing. What would it cost to just get cable to the entire town and to include two main fiber optic backbones? South Berry Road and South Street right now. From up here all the way down to Berry Plains and South Berry. That's, that's the envision, the vision I have that I want to see, can we fund this within the next year and a half? But we got to get the numbers so we can present it to see if we can fund it. I would love to know that by the time I leave office, they're at least installing it.
I would think maybe rather than ask them, what will they charge us to install it? I, I think we might want to phrase it more along the lines of what percentage of contribution would the town have to make to have you run these lines? You know, indicate that we're willing to contribute towards it, but not to, if we just tell them we're willing to foot the bill, they're just going to come charge us and, and run it. I, I think we should be a little wiser and say that's, you know, we'd like to contribute a percentage of that, what kind of percentage we need to contribute to get you guys to come put this in. It's been a lot of years, you know, you've got the sole rights of the town here and we have people that like to pick up and, and maybe approach it that way rather than just say we're going to fund it.
It sounds good, but we can't even get them to the table and we're offering to pay it all. How are you going to get them to the table if you're saying, I'm only going to pay seventy percent of it or fifty percent or thirty?
I was thinking thirty, yeah.
I mean, we can't even get them to come to the table saying, we want to do this, what will it cost? Or have we not asked that specific question?
I don't think we've asked that question.
No, we haven't asked to sit down and talk about having a meeting to discuss how much we're willing to give them.
And that's what I've asked you to do. I said, get a proposal to do it.
We've asked for what it would cost, we haven't asked them to get a proposal to have a meeting, that's why I'm saying we should.
You're still not listening to the question I just said. I said, what will it cost to do it? That's all I've asked. I didn't say setting up a meeting to figure out, to plan the construction schedule. I said, just tell me what it's going to cost. We can't even give the, get them to give us a number for the cost to do it. Not even who's going to pay for it or what portions, just what's your cost? If I can't get him to answer that question, knowing there's a customer that's about saying, I might pay you money, I don't see how you're going to get them to come to the table if you say, but I'm only considering paying twenty percent. They won't even answer the phone now, or are we not asking that question?
Maybe a matter of.
Are we asking that question, Andrew?
I haven't asked that question yet.
Good enough. It may be a matter of how we're asking the question too. Like they might be thinking, it's none of your business what stuff costs us to run. They might not be realizing that we're asking for the cost because we want to contribute, contribute towards it, that's what I'm saying. Saying, hey, what's the cost for you to do this? It's none of your business what it costs me to run my business. Why would they answer that question unless we follow it because we're looking to pay for this or pay for part of this? Or see if we can pay for part of this. I, I think it's how we present that question that's going to get a different answer from them or a response from them. Cause right now it sounds like we're sticking our nose in their business saying, you know, what are your expenses for doing this? And most businesses don't want to share that type of information unless they understand why, and I don't think we've asked in a way that they understand why.
I hear where you're coming from.
That's all. How the question is asked will be important. So those are my little inputs, sorry.
I got you. Any further information from anybody?
Economic development, uh, questionnaires available on the town website and on the town's Facebook page. Looking for as many people as we can to answer it, to, uh, to make the, uh, economic development plan the best it can be.
Was anything revised from the draft that was sent out for comments?
I believe all the comment, or all the comments that were back to them were incorporated to the final version.
Okay.
You didn't get a chance to see the final before.
I didn't see it until today and it was already posted, so.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any thoughts from the, those that stuck it out and listened to the whole meeting live? It's always more enjoyable live, for those that don't understand, it's like going to a major music event. It sounds much better than on your home TV with mono stereo, non-good audio.
It's more like a carnival show, but that's just me. Yes, it is, bigger than life.
Thank you very much for coming and for that of listening.
Motion to adjourn.
Call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye, thanks much.